All right.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the December twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. I'm Jeff Benton, President of the Board for this last meeting. To my left is Vice President, Fellow Commissioner Gary Merrill. To my right is Fellow Commissioner Barb Lewis. And our Deputy Administrator and Counsel is Eric Coestler here today. Our clerks, Brandy Wilson and Jennifer Waller. We can begin.
Resolution number two-three dash one-one-zero-nine, in the matter of approving electronic record of proceedings for a regular meeting held December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-zero-nine. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash one-one-one-zero, in the matter of approving purchase orders and announced certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR one-two-two-zero, memo transfers in batch number MT APR one-two-two-zero, and procurement card payments in batch number PC APR one-two-two-zero.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-one-zero. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash one-one-one-one, in the matter of approving the following list of carryover purchase orders for two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-one-one. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash one-one-one-two, in the matter of a new liquor license request from Ohio Springs Incorporated doing business as Sheetz and forwarding to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objections and no request for hearing.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-one-two. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash one-one-one-three, in the matter of approving a transfer of liquor license requests from ICG of Ohio LLC doing business at Shorty's Pizza and Growler to JMUL LLC and forwarding to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objections and no request for a hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-one-three. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash one-one-one-four, in the matter of a new liquor license request from RTR Resources LLC doing business as Prime &amp; Vine and forwarding to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objections and no request for a hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-one-four. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash one-one-one-five, in the matter of acknowledging receipt of the Treasurer's Report for the month of November two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-one-five. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash one-one-one-six, in the matter of approving transfer of funds for the year two thousand and twenty-four appropriation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Eric Coestler here on behalf of Justin Navi. This resolution would authorize the transfer of cash from the General Fund for various operating and capital budgets as outlined in the two thousand and twenty-four budget.
Okay. Any further discussion, comments? Vote, please, Jennifer.
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-one-six. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash one-one-one-seven, in the matter of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners adopting the two thousand and twenty-three Delaware County Multi-Hazarded Mitigation Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Alex McCarthy, Director of the Delaware County Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. With me today have J.C. Weber, who's our Emergency Management Specialist, and who's been spearheading the process of updating our mitigation plan for this year. We don't have a whole lot of requirements from FEMA in terms of planning and deliverables, but one of them is every five years we do need to update our hazard mitigation plan. Now, most of the plans that we have in our office are relatively short because during a disaster, we don't want to read a novel. But the hazard mitigation plan's a little bit different. We're given pretty specific requirements in terms of what FEMA wants to see in there. And what you end up having is a really nice mixture of a strategic plan for what hazards this county face, as well as a pre-identification of specific projects that different communities talk about wanting to accomplish with grants and other sources of funding over the next five-year period. It's a very complicated process, and we appreciate the hard work that J.C.'s put into this. And I'd like to turn it over to J.C. for her comments.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you said, I'm J.C. Weber. I'm the Emergency Management Specialist with Delaware County here. This is a renewal of the two thousand and nineteen plan. As Alex said, we have to redo this plan every five years. The current plan contains jurisdictional profiles based on the two thousand and twenty census numbers that came out very recently. We are lucky enough in this planning process to get a group of graduate students from OSU to work with us. So they helped with a lot of the data crunching and gathering of historical things and making sure that we move through this process a lot quicker than we would have previously. Normally, this process takes about a year to a year and a half to rebuild this plan. With the help of the graduate students, they finished the bulk of the plan in a semester at OSU, which is very impressive of them. We also included, from the county level, the Auditor's Office, the Board of Elections, Building Safety, the Common Police Court, the Visitors Bureau, the Coroner's Office, the Engineers Office, the Probate and Juvenile Court, Delaware Public Health District, the Regional Super District, Delaware County Transit, the Delaware County Sheriff's Office. We're all members of the county who participated in the planning process as stakeholders, as well as participants from all of the villages and cities throughout the county. In the hazard mitigation plan, we have identified severe winter events, pandemic and serious illness, utility failures, droughts, severe summer weather, floods, civil disturbances, tornadoes, cyber attacks, dam failure, terrorism, land subsidence, hazmat, hazardous material spells, invasive species, and earthquakes as our main hazards that we focus on here at countywide in order to mitigate them. The idea behind this plan and the mitigation actions is that when the federal government does calculations, they said for every one mitigation dollar spent, you're saving four when you have to do disaster response. So the idea behind this plan is to make Delaware County stronger before something bad happens. From the two thousand and nineteen plan, we added land subsidence and invasive species. In fact, land subsidence was something that the city of Sunbury came to us to add because they have erosion problems with the creeks there because we have many miles of shoreline that no Commissioners are familiar with here in Delaware County. And that has been having problems with some of their roadways. So that has allowed them to get a large grant for that project through the federal government in one of the requirements is having this plan here in the county. There are ninety-four total different mitigation actions that give access to everyone in the county to get those mitigation dollars. And we also included per FEMA calculations based on our vulnerable populations here in the county and climate change for each of the hazards that I listed earlier. There was in-depth analysis for those vulnerable populations using the FEMA National Risk Index for all of those different populations. Do you have any questions about this that I could answer?
Questions?
I don't have any questions.
As far as the ranking of disasters?
Yes.
Were people asked to rank the disasters?
Yes.
I believe, yeah.
So we used both the data and the rankings of all the stakeholders that participated in the planning process. So we used the probability of the disaster, the probability of having a severe occurrence, the onset time, so how much warning time you would get beforehand, the duration of disaster. A tornado, why really bad, doesn't last as long, we say, like COVID lasted here for the county, so the duration of that. And if it's a cascading event, which means it has overlap with different disasters in the county. So because COVID lasted so long, we had other things pop up in the middle of that and two things on top of each other require more resources than just one thing by itself. And then those were, that's the data set. And then we use the individual rankings given by all the different stakeholders participating in the planning process. That is put into a formula in a spreadsheet that helped us generate the actual ranking numbers, which I have here if you want the actual.
Yeah, I just wondered, yeah, working down from the top, like the top rankings, disaster rankings?
The top ranked hazard here in Delaware County is severe winter weather events with a priority score of four point three-nine-five-one. The pandemic and serious illness is second with a priority score of four point zero-one-six-seven. The third is utility failure with a priority ranking of three point two-seven-six-two.
Boy, thank you. Great, great, gosh. So much work goes into this. It's just amazing.
Yeah, thank you, J.C. and Alex and the whole team, the high state folks that helped. That's great. So thank you for doing this. Again, preparedness is important. Hopefully, we don't have to use anything in that binder in the coming years, but we're prepared, and that's important.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, need a vote?
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-one-seven. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Alex, I just want to welcome you to the Justice and Public Safety Steering Committee. Alex, we talked about this in another session, but Alex has been appointed to that committee and will be going to Washington, D.C. So much of the committee deals with FEMA and state and local EMA. So it's great to have you aboard and see in D.C.
Well, thank you guys very much for that.
You're welcome. Thank you for serving.
Thanks, Alex. Okay, Jennifer?
Item number eleven, resolution number two-three dash one-one-one-eight, a resolution of necessity for purchase of motor vehicles for the use of the Delaware County Emergency Medical Services Department.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Morning, Commissioners. Jeff Fischel, Delaware County EMS. I don't believe I will see you until next year, so Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday. Hope you have a good one. In front of you, you have a resolution for the purchase of two SUVs for use by our operations captains, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
I'll just make this statement. I made an email I sent back to you. Do you want to restate that just for the record or?
Sure, yes. You would like to ensure that we are removing other vehicles out of the fleet as we move two new ones into it.
I don't want the fleet to grow unwittingly. And there is a behind-the-scenes cost. We have to insure the vehicles that we have, and the inventory should not grow. And if we don't get rid of the vehicles, then that is a concern, so.
Very good. Other comments, questions? Vote, Jennifer?
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-one-eight. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Resolution number two-three dash one-one-one-nine, in the matter of approving the First Amendment to the contract between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and Outsider Entertainment LLC doing business as Outsider Video Motion Graphics for the purchase of video production services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Anderson with Job and Family Services. This is a contract we have. We received two pots of funding, one workforce dollars through GOBE, and then we also received funding through the DGFS. The first is to work with local businesses in preparing videos for recruitment. We also received funding and we produced a fraud, to prevent fraud video that we can use on social media and within our lobby and things, that people know how to report fraud and what needs reported if they receive benefits in order not to be a victim or conduct fraud. And this is increasing the contract by fifty-eight hundred dollars to complete the project.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-one-nine. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash one-one-two-zero, in the matter of approving the First Amendment to the agreement for Title IV E funding agencies and providing for the provision of child placement between Delaware County Department of Job and Family Services and New Mercury Outreach Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
And this is a new provider that we will use, and you're going to hear the same contract on the next one as well. One is for children's services, that we have the availability to use this provider for placement, and then our family should at first counsel doing the same.
Okay, so you've not used this?
We have not.
Provider in the past. Okay. More questions ahead. Comments, questions? Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-two-zero. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash one-one-two-one, in the matter of approving the Second Amendment to the agreement for Title IV E funding agencies and providers for the provision of child placement between Delaware County Department of Job and Family Services and New Mercury Outreach Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
And that's the same provider.
Same.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-two-one. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash one-one-two-two, in the matter of approving a memorandum of understanding for the Delaware County Department of Job and Family Services to address child abuse and neglect.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
And every two years, we're required to review and issue a new MOU with our community partners, law enforcement agencies, public safety, of how we're going to conduct and protect children through our foster care programs and abuse, neglect, dependency. So this is the MOU. We did send it out for signatures. It's customary that not everybody signs, and we make note of that, but we did do a good job this year of receiving signatures by most. The state has reviewed this and gave initial approval. Once the Commissioners approve, we will resubmit to the state. Slight chance that they may ask for a change after the fact because they'll take a deeper dive into it, but this is our standard MOU that we review and reissue every two years.
Any significant changes, Bob, from the last one?
Not that I'm aware of, but I did bring backup this morning. Julie Jones and Jeff Sell.
Experts.
Two backups.
Good morning. There are no significant, the biggest significant change is that now we need approval from the Commissioners. That statute was changed. Otherwise, we've had the same basic MOU for a while now.
Okay.
Jeff Sell, nothing really to add to that. Like Julie said, we're just adding the Commissioners to it this year. It's a standard MOU, model contract from the state.
Very good. Other questions, comments? Vote, Jennifer?
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-two-two. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you.
We're on page seven sixty-four. Resolution number two-three dash one-one-two-three, in the matter of appointing a member to the Delaware County Public Defender Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jane Hawes, Director of Communications. We have before you a resolution to appoint Lisa Kraft for the term that is, a seat that is currently vacant, an unexpired term that will end next October first, so we recommend your approval.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Yeah, thanks to Lisa.
And Lisa is fiscal officer for Orange and does a terrific job over there, so she will be a plus-two to the Public Defender Commission.
It is important to the Commissioners that we have a non-attorney on the Public Defender Commission, and I believe that worked out really, really well with the first non-attorney appointee, that being Don Hunter, who is now residing in Florida. And Lisa will do a fantastic job. She has done a great job in everything she's been involved in that I'm aware of, and I think we're fortunate to get someone of her quality.
Yeah, great. Thanks to Lisa, and the Public Defender will be well represented, having another non-attorney on there. So vote, Jennifer, please.
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-two-three. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash one-one-two-four, in the matter of appointing a member to the Delaware County Transit Board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
And with this one, we also have a vacancy, currently vacant seat. We're recommending appointing Jill Love to the County Transit Board.
Okay, yeah, again, thanks to Jill.
I'll just make a comment that Jill's a former mayor, soon to be the former mayor in Delena.
Yeah, soon to be former mayor, yeah.
And she interviewed extremely well, and there's no doubt that she will do an outstanding job on the Transit Board, so.
Yep, I think she'll particularly focus on partnerships with all the interested agencies that Transit either is or should be working with, so it's good to see her raise her hand and participate. Jennifer, vote, please.
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-two-four. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
Resolution number two-three dash one-one-two-five, in the matter of approving a change order OCO sixteen to the construction manager at risk contract between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and Gilbain Building Company for the Bixby Campus DACC redevelopment project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Good morning, John Melvin, Director of Facilities. This change order has actually made up about twenty different items we encountered throughout this project, so as we're trying to close out this project, we're tying up some of these loose ends. So I, this is, I'm going to tell you, this is probably not the last change order because there are still a few couple items we're working through with Gilbain and the subcontractors.
I'm sure they've all been reviewed and they're all reasonable.
Absolutely, yep.
I always get irritated with all the change orders that we've had this conversation.
Yes, with the size of this project and especially doing the size of a remodel job, but yeah, some of them, yeah, possibly could have been avoided, but yeah, some of them were just unavoidable, given the site conditions and stuff.
How's the, I have to ask, how the sheriff's building is coming?
It's coming together. The, kind of what's delaying the move-in is finishing up the furniture. A few of the punch list items, obviously with the Sheriff's Office and their operations are a little bit more critical. Want to make sure everything's buttoned up a lot tighter, you know, with the Bixby building and the other offices, like I said, move date, and we can work through all the punch list items. So we did have an issue with one of the subcontractors who was providing the casework closed their shop, so Gilbain's had to re-acquire some of the caseworks. So there, that's been a difficult issue to, here at the close of the project, to have to deal with, so.
All right, all right. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-two-five. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thanks, John.
Our next item is, Mr. Wilson is joining us this morning for a presentation on the Delaware County Convention and Business Bureau of Tourism.
You got video too, Tim?
I do not. We tried that last year, and we crashed the system, so I thought, I even brought Good Luck Charm today in form of computer expert, so. Tim Wilson, thank you, Commissioners. Tim Wilson, Executive Director of Destination Delaware. I brought with me today Becca Millam, who is not only our Digital Media Marketing Manager, but a recent graduate of Otterbine University, as of what, a week ago? Yeah, freshly minted, so we welcome her today.
Congratulations.
So get right into it. So going back to two thousand and twenty-two, I know we kind of fall in the middle here, we did not have a report from Tourism Ohio and Oxford Economics as far as the tourism economic impact study. Tourism Ohio is actually going to go back to doing that after COVID. They did it every year during COVID to show a recovery, but we will be getting another one next year. So mid, about summertime, I'll be back with that report to see the progress we've made. If we continue on, as you remember, we were at about one point eight billion dollars in tourism-generated revenue in two thousand and twenty-one, so we hope to see that number continue to climb. Transit tax revenues in twenty-two, just a little over three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. I think it's, we can say that two thousand and twenty-two was the first normal year we've had as a CVB since COVID and all the shutdowns, so we were able to weather that storm pretty well with your assistance, obviously, so thank you for that. Two thousand and twenty-three through November are three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, so we're going to bypass last year's number, which was the highest on record, so this, we're set up to be the highest bed tax collection that we've had since the CVB's conception in nineteen ninety-six, so I'd like to see, continue to see that progress, so we're very excited for that fact. The Ohio Auditor finished their audit of twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two operations, found no exceptions. Again, I will forward a copy of that audit report to everybody here, including County Administrator. So here's the bed tax comparison. Please excuse, there's some reporting anomalies here, I guess is the best way to say that. As you can see, there's quite a spike. August was not literally the greatest month in tourism history in Delaware County, as it would be seen by this graph, but there was some, the way the dates laid out, there was some collection and reporting on each side of that. But you can see, we're still climbing out, being the orange line is two thousand and twenty, which we don't ever want to go back there. I'm hoping one of these days we'll get back to normal enough, I can just drop that line off, so we don't have to keep going back and revisiting that. But you can see each year, we've been progressing as we've come out of COVID, so we're very excited to see that. The blue line is actually two thousand and nineteen, so we're far exceeding that now. Operationally, obviously, we're still working our three largest tourism draws in county, Polaris Fashion Place, Tanger Columbus, and the Columbus Zoo, still working diligently with those three entities as they're bringing in almost twenty million visitors annually. So we continue to work directly with Polaris, promoting some of their events, new store openings, and we also still sponsor the KidX Event Series at the mall. We did welcome the Central Ohio Symphony to the mall last year, they played in the main atrium. And just so everyone knows, they will be playing again December twenty-third, which is a Saturday at the main atrium, so if anybody's out shopping and would like to stop by and hear the Central Ohio Symphony play, please feel free to do so, so. Tanger Columbus, they continue to impress, they have a hundred percent occupancy there, which has been great. You know, they're swapping out some brands and things to maintain relevance and whatnot. We continue to work with them directly. We're sponsoring the holiday tree. I don't know if you've been out there to see that, but it's a beautiful tree, and we get a lot of promo opportunities from that. We also sponsor, they're still, continue to sponsor their second Saturday Event Series as well as Barktober, which is an event in October focusing around pets. We'll continue to, continue to keep working with them to keep promoting visitors from out of the community to come and shop and spend their money with us. Columbus Zoo and Aquarium, they've been doing a lot of great things. Obviously, they had a little bit of reset, some great new leadership there. I think Tom Schmidt's going to do great things at the zoo. Obviously, we continue to work with them directly. We've got some exciting things coming up, I think, in two thousand and twenty-four with them, but we also continue to help promote Zufari, Wild Lights in Beezy Bay and the Zombie Bay programs amongst others. The Delaware County Fair, who could forget, pays for the million. It was a record breaking year. I think everybody was excited about that. We saw a good turnout as far as attendees. I was very pleased to see how many folks were there. As you can see, there's a picture. I was there as usual, had a friend in tow, Miss Ohio. I think you all remember her. Madison Miller, she was our, actually a Destination Delaware's intern through COVID twenty, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. So we're excited to welcome her back as Miss Ohio. And I think we did a lot of good, a lot of great promotion on the race and on the fair specifically. So we hope to see a continuation of that momentum going forward. We also hosted in twenty-three, we hosted our first influencer event, which is basically we just invite a myriad of influencers, social media to come to the community, experience something and then from that they report out and blast out social media content to all their followers. We had over ten, we had ten separate, I guess, social media influencers. We had a few more that, or a couple that couldn't make it. But we had a reach of about a quarter million folks with that. So we're very excited to do that at Leeds Farm. Again, we're trying to look at the ag tourism in county specifically. We'll get a lot of that in October, obviously with the farms and whatnot and in pumpkin patches and things. So we'll continue to work on that. Also, we saw some, some first timers, Torchies Tacos down on Gemini. That was their first location in Ohio. We're excited to see some of these one-off offerings. Same with Ice Cream Gelato. That's actually in the Polaris Fashion Place. That was also their first location in Ohio. And something I'd never heard of was Pop Shelf. Of course, these guys knew what that was. But this was their first and only location in Central Ohio region. Is that correct? But it, that's been a wildly popular location. So we're glad to see, excited to see some things coming into the mall area and Polaris area across from the mall and add some life to those areas. So it's pretty exciting.
So what is Pop Shelf?
What's that?
What is Pop Shelf?
It's like a little bit of a discount store. I don't know. If you know what like Five Below is, it's just like an expansion of that kind of.
Yeah, I don't even know what Five Below is. You might have to help us with that.
It's like a better Dollar General.
Oh.
There you go. How's that?
All right.
Dollar General might disagree with this.
Yeah, right. Okay. Thank you, Becca. So we're, yeah, we're excited to see people still seeking out Delaware County retail locations to, you know, to put their first and only locations in Ohio. So obviously we have things like Ikea in county, which is very exciting. So we hope to continue that trend. We have destination stores where people will come specifically to Delaware County to find these amenities. We launched a Delaware County Fishing Trail. I think I tried to show you all some video of that last time when I was here and that's what train wrecked the A D system. So we will pass on that for the sake of everyone behind me that still has to come after.
Where, where is it, Tim?
The fishing trail covers the whole county.
Oh, the whole county?
Yeah, we'll have, when it's all finished, we'll have about twenty-five locations within county that people can, from all type, from bank fishing to rivers to lakes to boats. Every, all the, everything in between, people can visit the county and fish. And what we want to do is create a situation where someone could log on to our site that's not familiar with the area. Said, hey, I want to take my family fishing in Delaware County. Where can I go? And we have some videos on there that you can launch and kind of explains the area and what to expect, what to bring, things like that, just to make their experience a little better, a little easier, cut honestly. So I don't know what I'm talking to you on. My computer's getting tired. I'm sure you guys are too. So yeah, we're very excited about that. We've, we've got Nitra Hamper, who if you remember her from, I think it was Channel Ten News, she used to be an anchor. She's actually helping with that. I don't think I was enough to carry the, the hosting role by myself. So. So yeah, if you get on our site, the videos are, the link to the videos are on our site. So if you want to check a few of those out, but I'll let you guys check that out on your own. We also were excited to welcome the Ohio Outdoor Writers to Delaware County. It's the first time they've ever been here. We worked very diligently with Preservation Parks, Nationwide Hotel and Conference Center to get them here and to have them experience county. It's basically just a collection of everyone that writes for any publication about the outdoor, outdoor activities. Again, with so much emphasis, we're trying to place on the outdoor activities here. As we all know, there's the most shoreline miles of any county in the state of Ohio. I got it in. We want to continue to work and make sure that people understand what outdoor amenities are here and how they can access them. So we're very excited to welcome them. That was back in the spring of twenty-three. Chambers Road Cover Bridge. I want to thank you all for that. This is a collaboration between ourselves, Suburban Natural Gas, Consolidated Electric, Delaware County Engineer. We got together, for anyone that didn't know, the Chambers Road Cover Bridge is Delaware County's last covered bridge. I think at one point our high watermark, we had over eighty covered bridges in county is what history book told me anyway. This is our last one. And apparently I'm not, I was not an engineer in school, but apparently this is very important architecturally. So we want to preserve it for a lot of reasons, including that. We thought that installation of lighting on the bridge might help not only the safety. We do see a lot of folks trying to cut through there, going to the K O A campground who ultimately knocked their air conditioning units off their campers. That people are actually vandalizing the bridge as well. So we hope, thought that the lighting on the end of the bridge, which you can see in this photo, would help to discourage some of that. So we'll see, continue going forward. We're going to continue to do some aesthetic improvements to that bridge as time permits. And, but everybody was great working on this and getting this done. There was, it was more to it as usual, of my big plans. There's more to it than meets the eye, including we had to trench six hundred some feet of electric over there to get it to work. So. But it's done. It, it looks really nice. And as you can see in the picture, it's lit up very nicely. So hopefully we can see a few less impacts into the roof of the bridge too. So. And thank you all for that. That was part of the Community Enhancement Grant Program that you guys helped us with. So thank you all for that. Becca launched the Delaware County Coffee Trail. This is one of her first projects. Very excited to see this launch off. I mean, there's a burgeoning coffee business in Delaware County, as I think everybody can see. We started off with what, ten, eleven, eleven coffee shops? And these are all local shops. These, you know, we've left out the chains. They've got their own marketing budget. So and then we also added seven additional shops in twenty twenty-three. So it continues to grow and it's very exciting. And there's some very unique places and a lot of nice small businesses have been started there. So we're anxious to see that continue. We've had a lot of people on the trail. I don't know to this day how many people have completed it. But it's, it's been, I feel like it's been very successful in bringing awareness to the entire county and all the coffee shops countywide, as far as that goes. Destination, let's see, Ohio Division of Wildlife. I think a few of you were in attendance for that. We were able to facilitate Bullseye and Business with them at their new Delaware Wildlife Area Public Shooting Range. I think it was a great day. They just, they would like to just bring some awareness to the facility. There is some conference and convention space there that they could use in the future. We hope to do this maybe annually. It was a great partnership between ourselves and Ohio Division of Wildlife, which is certainly something we find very important with such a significant amount of Ohio, O D and R property within county. So. And I'm talking too long again, apparently. Okay. That said, also, I didn't put this in here, but Ohio did change, Ohio's tagline is a tourism entity, used to be Ohio, find it here. They have changed that now back to Ohio, the heart of it all. Lydia Mahalik, who used to be the Mayor of Finley, is now the Director of Department of Development for Ohio. And then she just recently appointed Sarah Wickham, the new Director of Tourism Ohio. We were working with Sarah. She was, used to be with O D and R. We worked with her like on the grand opening of the Allen Creek Marina. So we know her very well. And I think it'll be, it's a great fit. And we're very excited to see the future of what, you know, the state can bring to the table as well as only just local assets. Also, we worked with Preservation Parks on some fly fishing instructional clinics. Again, we're trying to support our fishing trail, getting young people and, and young and adults involved in fishing. We also hosted Fly Fishing Film Tour Event with Preservation Parks at the Strand Theater a couple of months back. And that was another great event to bring awareness, I think, to the outdoors and the outdoor activities in Delaware County. So digital media, this is our, obviously our mainstay, our website. We're seeing over eighteen thousand monthly page views. We've worked diligently to bolster this with some Google Ads and whatnot, trying to drive additional traffic to our site. Our bounce rate was a problem at first, which to me is usually speaks to uncompelling, that's even a word, uncompelling content. We worked diligently to create a better user experience on our current site and make more compelling information on the site. So people would stay on longer and ultimately be able to find their, their final destinations on our site or at least get linked to their final destination. So we're excited to see that bounce rate come down. Also, our clips page, I don't, I think E M A left, but we want to thank them for their leadership on the twenty twenty-four Eclipse Project. I think it's been great to get ahead of that. I know some peers in my industry were from Kentucky. They got overrun at twenty seventeen, the last time this eclipse thing happened. And they weren't, they were unprepared. So I'm glad to see them take the bull by the horns, for lack of a better term, and, and get ahead of this. We haven't been marketing Delaware as maybe, people are coming to the county regardless. We're trying to convince them to come early and stay late just because they can avoid some of the traffic problems. And we hope they'll come and stay in the county and enjoy themselves and enjoy some of the amenities, you know, stay in some hotels, eat, eating some of the restaurants and things. So that's kind of been our, our focus with that. But right now our clip, our clips page is the most visited of any page on our site. We are seeing hotels are starting to fill now. It took a while. I think they're, we're a little bit further from the path to totality in some of the counties to the north of us. But I think as those hotels are filling, we're starting to see a backfill into Delaware County. So we should be a hundred percent occupancy by the time it gets down to the day of. So make your plans now, get your glasses ready. So, you know, you may want to stay home that day. I don't know.
Yeah, exactly.
Facebook, Instagram, this has been a mainstay of ours. Thanks to Becca and, and Hope. They've been working diligently to continue to grow this. We're over forty-eight thousand followers now. I believe the last time I was here, we were twenty-seven thousand followers. So our numbers continue to grow substantially. Becca's also been putting a significant amount of effort into improving our Instagram page. We're almost to ten thousand followers on that page now. So that said, you know, we're reaching four, five hundred thousand people monthly just via our social media channels, which we feel like has been very helpful, especially when we can highlight small business trails, things like that. We're, we're seeing a direct return, I think, on that investment into the community and people coming to visit us and then having, excuse me, having a destination once they get here. Again, thanks to Becca and Hope. They've been working diligently to, again, make sure that our, we're not only just putting content out for the sake of putting content out, but that it's compelling. So we're earning a twenty-one cent cost per click right now and our industry average is at ninety cents. So we feel like that's, you know, what, what we're putting out there is, is very compelling and very interesting to people enough to where they will actually click on it, click through and get on our site, which again, we hope we can help, you know, moderate an experience for them once they get here. So. Also during COVID and immediately thereafter, we kind of set our sites internally to help support our local business with our social media. We've since turned that back out since things have kind of settled down. We're trying to market heavily into the two and a half million people that live in Columbus metro area. And we've, we've seen the city of Columbus and Columbus Region bypass Delaware as our number one audience on all our social media channels now. So we're, we're continuing to drive that in there where, you know, there's a much larger audience. But it's also that much more challenging because obviously everybody wants a part of a large audience like that. So we're very excited to see that. Influencers, we welcomed over forty-six influencers in twenty twenty-three. Again, these are social media folks that have a following. We feel like we get a great return on that investment because the, you know, their audience feels that they're a credible witness to what they're seeing in Delaware County. And we've had some great, great relationships and some great product put out by some of these influencers. So we'll continue to work with that and hopefully grow that side of the media. A few examples of some ads. The first one is our collaboration with Main Street Delaware on their summer and winter program. That ran all over the entire summer. Again, some Facebook ads just for ourselves. Apologize, it got a little blurry there for some reason. And then obviously the jug, we put a significant push on the jug because of its million dollar status this year, trying to make sure that, or we hope that that can continue on year to year. Again, some more ads. These are some particularly good ones. We reached over a quarter million people with one ad. On the first one, almost three hundred thousand with the second one. So as far as value is concerned, I think this is a great return on investment when you consider how little we have invested in some of these and the reach we get. So. Sierra in the City was just here about a month ago and she did a great job with the holiday shopping. And food in Cleveland, again, obviously she's from Cleveland area. We've been branching out a little further, Cleveland. Sierra in the City is actually from Indianapolis, some areas that we've identified in the past where people are coming from. So we're very excited to see people traveling further and further to come here. We know it's the best. We just need to make sure everybody else does. Solar Eclipse, again, this has been something, and again, thanks to Delaware County E M A for their leadership on this. We put out our solar eclipse page over the summer on twenty-three, just to start getting some information out and linking back to the state of Ohio. We'll now link that now to the county's pages. They've got a good page up now. So we'll end up linking that. But again, this has been our number one page for the last, I don't know, several weeks at least. And we feel like now the things are starting to pick up and we'll have a better idea of what kind of a crowd we can anticipate in April when the eclipse actually gets here. And we've been, you know, we dove into some Google Ads this year. Again, you can see the, the eclipse we're advertising. We've been advertising that pretty heavily. But again, we want to create the narrative to come early, stay late, not just show up day of, you know, enjoy the traffic jam and then try to get out of here. But if you get here, you know, the eclipse is on a Monday. If you get here on a Saturday or Sunday, you can enjoy the county, you know, get some peace, find a place to stay, enjoy Delaware County and all its amenities. And then you can head out on, you know, Tuesday morning and, and avoid all the traffic jams. So again, that's the kind of narrative we're trying to spin up. So. Strategic partners, again, we certainly want to thank the commissioners for your support. Obviously our bridge project would have never gotten done without your help. I know we welcome Monica Connors. I saw her back there. I think she's still here. There she is. We want to thank her and we're excited to continue to work with her going forward. We, we appreciate it being part of the Strategic Economic Plan that was just released recently. I know there's a lot of tourism in it. So we look forward to continue trying, working with Monica and trying to implement some of those, some of the things in that plan. Obviously the additional partners mentioned it. Thanks, is Jane still here? Jane's here. Thank you, Jane, for allowing us again to use your, your wonderful video. You make each year with county statistics. We run at the kiosk at Polaris. Again, when we put something like that in front of ten million visitors annually, that's a pretty good return on that investment. So. That said, opportunities for the future, obviously continue to advocate for the Delaware County Airport improvements in, in that regard. Continue obviously to work with Delaware County Economic Development. All, obvious, all the, any and all county municipalities and trying to help them with anything as far as awareness or, you know, facilitating conversations about bringing in new tour, travel tourism opportunities. We'll continue to work on that. Our main project probably for the first quarter of twenty twenty-four, we're going to do a major overhaul of the county's website, our Destination Delaware website. We're going to really work diligently and improve searchability, user experience on that site. And then also incorporate artificial intelligence into that to help guide the search function. So when people get on our site, we want to make sure that it's easy for them to search based on their location. And as we're seeing a continued increase in the number of mobile users on our site, it's not, it's no longer desktop. It's, is it, are we to eighty percent now or close? Seventy-nine, seventy-nine percent mobile use now. So we want to make sure that our site is ultimately as friendly to that as humanly possible. Again, we'll continue to bring more influencers. We, I think we're going to have an influencer day with the city of Powell in April of this year. And then we'd like to work on a project to create some of this kind of signage that could be out in the county using Q R codes and whatnot to help guide people around a little bit of wayfinding as far as the tourism is concerned. We feel like this is economical enough that we could include most of this even smaller municipalities with a project like this. So. More, I'm sure I may be back. So just maybe a heads up. There's a board of directors for twenty-two, twenty-three. So with that, I hope, I hope I didn't take too long. Sorry if I did. But I'll entertain any questions or anything you had.
Questions?
I could go on for days, but.
Just a great job.
Now we need to hear from you for now fifteen minutes, right?
Right.
Yeah, a lot going on, really. A lot of neat initiatives and Delaware County's got a lot to offer. It's neat to see it all pulled together and presented so people can easily access the various attractions and so on. It's really neat.
I just, I'm impressed, amazed in your dedication to Delaware County. And you, you and your board and your staff, I think you have tremendous job within the resources you have available to you. And I constantly am amazed by that. And I just, where do we stand on the a million dollar for this year's brown jug? Commissioner Benton may know more about that than you, but are we going to get there this year?
Well, there, there's a lot of people working behind the scenes to, to make sure that the State House understands that that was a very successful jug. The most successful jug I think we've probably ever had. And that, that benefits everyone. And so I think, I think they're aware of it. I think we have certainly a positive impression down at the State House and we're pushing to make sure they, they fund next year.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we're very excited. And, you know, thank you, Commissioner Merrill, for that. I appreciate it. I can assure you that we're going to continue to work diligently to make, make sure we're finding and actively seeking out the best R O I on all of our marketing dollars and using technology and collaborations and partnerships where we can to further that. So. Yeah, everybody wants more resources, obviously, but we're going to, you know, work diligently to make sure that, you know, we're making the best use of what we have.
Well, and it helps, it helps us too with all that's going on. So many, so many things to do. And my gosh, it's, it's great. And then with the social media and Becca, you know, coming aboard full time, this will be, this will be even better in the new website. So you've done a great job, Tim and Becca, and really appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate the confidence and like I said, we'll continue to work diligently. They amaze me. They find things that I didn't know existed a lot. But there is a lot here and I think, you know, bringing that to light is, is the best way we can help the small business, you know, continue to grow. And, and obviously our, our big businesses as well, you know. They may, they may have a large marketing budget, but again, combining those, you know, those destination stores into a, you know, a weekend away can really benefit us, you know, with our tourism revenue. So.
Again, clever, the coffee trail, the fishing trail, those are all neat ideas because people really embrace going on trails and that's a neat, neat attraction. I didn't see a golfing trail. Is there, is that?
We're, we were working on that. We need to get with some of the private courses, need to let us work with that a little bit better. But yeah, we'll get there. Absolutely.
I'm counting on it.
We will get, we will get there, I promise.
Jennifer Wallraven and I are most interested in the coffee trail.
And Dawn.
We've had a lot of interesting new, I mean, a lot of very interesting new small shops that have opened, which always have unique offerings. So I know the ethos over. I, I was surprised, and again, they find these places and I was like, I can't believe there's a coffee shop here, but the place was crowded. So. And rightfully so. They had, they had great product there. So it's, yeah, it's a very exciting time.
There's, there's a new coffee shop opening up. I don't think it's quite open yet at the corner of Dublin Road and Home Road.
We actually had a soft opening like last, or a couple of days ago.
Okay.
They'll be open.
Is that part of the coffee trail?
Um, they will be.
They will be? Okay, okay. Good.
We usually let them get open first and make sure.
Yeah, that's probably. And it's good to see also the, the link to the Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Yes, yes.
Tourism's a huge industry for us and can, can be even bigger and better.
Absolutely. Yeah. And we appreciate, you know, being invited to the table. You know, E M A invites us to the tables, you know, Economic Development, a lot of the, working with a lot of county agencies here have all been great. You know, I see Bob, Bob's still here, job in Family Services. So yeah, it's, it's a great place to be and it's a great place to work because everybody is collaborative. And what else? I think we just want to make the best county we can.
Great.
Oh, that's good. Thank you to your board too.
Absolutely.
Thanks to your team. Thanks to your partners and good luck.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
All right. That brings us to item number twenty. It's on page seven sixty-five. Resolution number two, three dash one, one, two, six. In the matter of approving a contract for services with Fischel Downey, Albrecht and Rippenhoff.
Someone?
Second.
Discussion?
Eric Hostetler. We have retained through authorization by the Court of Common Pleas, Special Counsel Fischel Downey, Albrecht and Rippenhoff to handle labor and employment matters. We annually renew our agreement with them and recommend approval. The rates are the same as last year.
They do a very job.
Yeah, they do a nice job. Tricky area. Vote, Jennifer?
Vote on motion 23-1126, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 23-1127, in the matter of continuing the employment of legal counsel and fixing the compensation to be paid for legal services pursuant to RC 309.09C.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
In addition to special counsel, the board is authorized to retain general counsel and annually needs to continue that employment and fix the compensation in the journal. This resolution does that for 2024.
All right, further comments, questions, discussion, or vote, please?
Vote on, motion 23-1127, Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 23-1128, in the matter of fixing the compensation for the county administrator for 2024.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
This resolution will establish the compensation for the county administrator for 2024, and it includes, upon Tracy's request, to eliminate her car allowance. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Comments, questions, vote, Jennifer?
Vote on, motion 23-1128, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 23-1129, in the matter of proceeding with the construction of improvements to Home Road and Green Meadows Drive, both locations east of US Route 23 in Orange Township, Delaware County, Ohio, and assessing the cost therefore.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
Excuse me, good morning, Rob Riley, chief deputy engineer. I've been working with Eric on this resolution. He's prepared both the, a couple of different components. First, you'll recall that a couple of years ago, actually several years ago, we entered into agreement with Kerbler Farms to help fund the Home Road extension east of 23 and future Green Meadows Drive extension. That agreement involved a petition for a special assessment on the new residential project that is underway right now near the railroad and where the future Green Meadows Drive extension would be. And so this would conclude that and wrap up that, that process, leaving the special assessment as requested and agreed upon, to both pay for the Home Road extension as well as the Green Meadows Drive extension, which I'll, I'll talk about now. We've worked on this project as well for some time and are now ready to go out to bid on that project. This will connect the extension of Home Road up to Lewis Center Road at the current roundabout. We'll receive bids in January and then hopefully have a contract in early February for that work. Planning on wrapping up that project mostly in July, that is the completion timeframe, and very, very happy to see this done. I'll circle back to the Home Road extension. As you know, we open a roundabout at Lewis Center Road and where the future Home Road extension will tie in, so that's open and functioning, working well. The remaining very last piece is the overpass of the railroad, still working diligently on that, but really, any project involving the railroad does take some more time because the railroad has full authority and control over their facility, and so we need to work through the permitting and approval process with the railroad to get approval to do that. So that work will continue. As of now, we are hoping to break ground on that in 2025, probably late in 2025. That is, of course, subject to the railroads giving us the necessary approvals to do that. So threw a lot at you there, happy to answer any questions, but before I do that, wanted to thank you and your board very much for your support throughout this year, and wish you all a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Rob. Same to you. Questions, comments? I think you covered my, my favorite topic, it's timeline. So how long would the construction of the overpass take typically?
That will probably be about a 15-month construction timeframe. Once we start building the embankments and the approaches up to the railroad, will take some time. The bridge itself is probably somewhere in the order of six to nine months.
Right. I drove down the extension of Home Road, or will be Home Road, out of that roundabout to the south, and again, it connects into the neighborhood like, like it was planned, and it's set up for the, for the bridge.
It is.
I drove it last night, so.
I just wanted to see how it's.
And we do have the other two projects that involve the railroad as well, so I assume those are also working a little bit, or?
The, the other two railroad.
Orange and Cheshire?
Yeah.
Yes, the Cheshire Road, that will be the first project. We'll be giving you some more information next year on that, but our hope is to hopefully go to construct on that late in 2024, have that wrapped up around the time hopefully we're starting the Home Road grade separation. And then finally, last but not least, would be the Orange Road grade separation.
Yeah. And again, the Green Meadows tie-in to North Road is, is very good. That'll, again, offer some relief to 23, because it'll, it'll parallel and almost connect all the way up to the city of Delaware, once we get the North Road to the north of Shanahan finished, which is going to be, I know, coming soon. Other comments, questions, vote, Jennifer?
Vote on, motion 23-1129, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
We do have a couple items for other business this afternoon. Let's start with item number one for the sheriff's office. Resolution number 23-1130, in the matter of approving the first addendum to the Target Solutions LLC agreement via and between Target Solutions Learning LLC doing business as Vector Solutions, the Board of Delaware County Commissioners, and the Delaware County Ohio Sheriff's Office for additional software services.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Dean Stelford, Delaware County Sheriff's Office. This is additional software we're going to utilize for Delaware Tactical Unit, the multi-jurisdictional response unit that goes out on a lot of incidences. They've struggled trying to do incident reports collectively as a group, and so a lot of it was handwritten notes and things coming in and somebody trying to pull that together. So this will get us a database that all the, all the members of the Tactical Unit can use and get access to and review, and then, and then keep, obviously, a historical record of what they're doing. Entertain any questions?
Questions, comments? Vote, Jennifer?
Vote on, motion 23-1130, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thanks, Dean.
Thank you.
Our second item for other business, resolution number 23-1131, in the matter of approving a program administration services agreement between the Delaware County Regional Energy Special Improvement District Incorporated.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
Morning, Eric Hostetler again. The, an Energy Special Improvement District, or ESID, as I'll call it from here on out, is a nonprofit corporation that enables a specified geographic area to provide, or for lenders to offer property assessed clean energy or pace loans within that area. Back in 2019, Westerville, ESID was established as a nonprofit corporation, and some projects were done in Westerville, and later in Orange Township, Evans Farm Development. These are energy efficiency or alternative energy improvements for existing or new, new built properties. And at the time that it was created, our Economic Development Director was named a board member, and since that time, there's been renewed interest in utilizing the financing that's available within this area. And my recommendation was that we formalize from your board our Economic Development Department's role in that process, since it is a separate entity. So the agreement before you is a, is an agreement for program administration services. Economic Development Department would be providing some administration services for ESID. ESID Board had a meeting earlier this week, and Monica Connors was appointed the chair, and she's here in case you have any additional questions. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the agreement itself.
Okay. Very good.
I have no questions.
No, I think it's a great idea, if Monica wants to just step up and tell us a little more.
Yeah, I know, we created this 2019.
Yep, 2019 is, it was established, and currently, the jurisdictions that are included are Westerville and Orange Township. The county is, is not a jurisdiction that can participate, but Economic Development having that tie-in was seen as really beneficial, and so a board member seat was provided. And since the initial founding of the ESID, the, they've changed their name to now be the Delaware County Regional ESID. So it, I'll let Monica talk about her plans for maybe promoting this to other jurisdictions that might want to join.
Yeah, yeah, I know, Monica, we'll let you expand on that, but I know this is something that I think has wider appeal.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners, Monica Connors, Director of Economic Development. To Eric's point, right now, we're geographically focused on Orange Township and the city of Westerville, where actually, the ESID is not allowed to transact, do transactions in communities until they're brought into the ESID. So one of the reasons why we want to continue this program is the city of Delaware actually has an opportunity to have a project, and so they would be required to join the ESID. One of the hopes for next year is that we would actually broaden the reach. Brooker Grayden is the law firm that works with the ESID, so we would hold a webinar for all the townships and municipalities in first quarter of next year to educate them on what it is, what, you know, if they have a business that's interested, it could be a very small business or a large business, but to help bring that collaboration to the county.
Yeah, that's, that's good. I knew, when we created it, it sounded like an interesting idea, and we had a little flurry of activity, and it just got quiet for, for a while, so it's good to see it re-energized. And I do think it'll have much more appeal, you know, as they, as, as the jurisdictions find out about it.
Yes, it actually makes, it can make buildings more valuable, so in Westerville's case, two of the buildings are in Westar development, so those tenants, you know, if they have certain energy requirements, they may look at that property as a, you know, a desired location. So that's another example of the benefits.
Yeah. Well, that's great. So again, thanks, thanks for your leadership on that. Any other questions?
Well, I'd just like to, to thank our Economic Development Director for her work on, on, is it Mill on Flax?
Yeah.
I thought it was Mills.
Mill on Flax, yeah.
Mill on Flax. And tell us a little bit about that, there is a front page article in the Gazette.
And Business First.
Right.
Oh, and Business First, too.
Yeah, picked it up.
I mean, that, that's a real game changer, transformational for the city of Delaware.
Definitely, no, this is one, you know, it's always great to end the year on a project that you're really excited about. So this was another example of collaboration, so the city of Delaware's been working very hard on this project for over a year. The state of Ohio Department of Development had awarded the project with what we call a T-MUD, a transformational grant, and those are very hard to come by and very oversubscribed, so the fact that the state saw this project as one that merited the T-MUD award showed you how impactful the project could be. But over the course of the year, year and a half that the development team has been working, our, our economic climate has changed, interest rates have changed, so there was a definite need for some other options, and our, kudos to our development, our Delaware County Finance Authority for really playing the strong role that, that it did to help close a, a small gap and provide some financing through their bond fund. So it's definitely a win-win, and we're, we're super excited to partner with the city. Thanks to Jane Hawes for her collaborative approach on our joint press release as well, so great way to end the year.
Boy.
And we shouldn't underestimate the leadership provided by the Finance Authority and their board and their leaders, so.
And Monica.
And Monica, yeah.
Right, right.
She's standing there, I think that might be the thing. But a lot of people within the Finance Authority and other people around made this happen, so accolades for a lot of people.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, maybe to tie that back to the ESID, we see a lot of opportunity for the Finance Authority as well to be, you know, playing a role in the Energy Special Improvement District. So it's another way for the county Economic Development Team to bring all these important partners together.
Right.
Boy.
And the Daimler Group, River West Partners are the private sector developers that pulled this together.
They, they really worked hard, too.
Yeah, they did, they worked very hard.
On this, yeah.
Yeah, First Commonwealth and CF Bank provided the funding that the banks did. Again, it was just a great partnership, a lot of people figured it out.
Right, right.
It's great to see. Because it is, T-MUD stands for Transformational Mixed Use Development, right?
Yes.
Okay, so T-MUD, this is a very successful T-MUD, and it really is going to be catalytic for the east side of Delaware, which is just huge. There's a lot of other projects we're working on, others are working on, that, that will help Delaware City and the region, quite honestly.
It's a game changer.
It really is, it really is. I agree, great, great way to end the year on a, on a positive note like that, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Vote on, motion 23-1131, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
That brings us to administrator report.
I don't have anything to report, thank you.
Nothing else? You've talked a lot this morning.
I, I would mention that yesterday was my 20-year wedding anniversary.
Oh, congratulations.
Oh, my gosh.
The ladies.
And also your wife as well, right?
Her too.
Good point. Christian Merrill.
You know, we're, we're ending the year, we don't have another meeting this year, and you can get a little nostalgic, and I'm going to do that, just, we think about our county, we talked about a lot of things that happened today, the deployments and the dedication shown by a lot of different groups, and you can, you can multiply that by times 10 for all the people that weren't here today, but this is a great example of all the good things that are happening in Delaware County. Wherever I go, I hear that. People very impressed, very pleased, very excited about what's happening in Delaware County, and it's due to a lot of great people doing great things, and again, many of you in the room, but many of you are not in the room. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you, and I hope everyone has a very Merry Christmas, and of course, a Happy New Year as we begin the new year, and we'll have a lot of exciting things on our plate for next year as well. This is just kind of a continuation, I'm not going to say the beginning, a continuation, and we'll see what the next chapter holds next year, but I know one thing will be positive, this county will be better served a year from now than it is today because of all the great things that we're doing as a group, and it is a group effort, so thank you to everybody involved.
Very, very much so.
I will just add on to that, our excellent staff makes all the difference, and thank you so much, our department heads and their staff, and other office holders, and I'd like to thank Commissioner Benton for his excellent job as president of the board.
Well, I was going to think to the first meeting next year, so.
Yeah. Let's get through this one first, we could really crash and burn here, you may regret that. Anything else?
No.
Okay, well, I just wanted to also.
Or Merry Christmas, Jennifer.
Yeah, echo that as well. Couple other things, we did have a land bank meeting on Monday, and we've, again, land bank has had a good year. We've demolished, I think, six properties, we've got four more queued up to demolish in the, in the, in the replacement round of round one, and we've got four or five projects already teed up for round two, and we've got a couple of brownfield projects teed up, which is, which is good to see, because again, we can deal with buildings that need to come down, and we can deal with sites that need to be remediated from a pollution standpoint. So again, we've got a great team, great partnership with the city of Delaware, they've been leading this complicated process, and we're getting all sorts of good things done there, so I want to thank the city of Delaware for their, their participation on that.
Regional planning tonight?
Regional planning tonight, that's right. I did also, we did just do a press release on the, another bond that the Finance Authority issued just, I don't know, today, yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday. And this is another big project, this is Addison Farms on the north side of the city of Delaware, and it's a mixed use, it's got a variety of housing, which we really need, it's going to provide some commercial, retail, et cetera, and the Finance Authority and Monica, I'm sure, was a big, big part of getting it done, but it's, it's the type of project city needs, the area needs to continue to grow, and the Finance Authority is, again, another example of leadership in getting that, that project closed. So again, great, great, again, Bill Bishop's the chair, the whole Finance Authority works on it, but, and nice to see them making big contributions to the, the activity here.[1763.87] I think that's it, I did want to wish everyone Merry Christmas as well. It is coming up, hope everyone has a good Christmas and safe and Happy New Year. Jennifer, we do need executive session.
We do, resolution number two-three dash one-one-three-two, in the matter of a journey into executive session for consideration of appointment, promotion, compensation of a public employee or a public official to consider the purchase of property for public purposes.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-three dash one-one-three-two, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
All right, we're now in executive session.